All right, and with that, we'll call to order the meeting. We'll start with the flag sweep. Best he can leave that.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Chairman Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Gursel.
Here.
Um, council, or sorry, Planning Commissioner, um, Brunel.
Here.
Uh, Planning Commissioner Levine.
Here.
And Planning Commissioner Opie.
Here.
Next up, minutes from September thirteenth. Do we have a motion or any concern?
Move to approve?
Sure. Commissioner Brunel moves to approve. Any seconds?
I second that motion.
With Commissioner Levine second. You'll have to help me out with this. It's been awhile. It's been since September thirteenth.
No problem. Ask if there's any public comment on the minutes.
Okay, any public comment on the minutes from September thirteenth? All right, it looks like nothing from the public.
So you can call for the vote.
And we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, because we're wearing masks, we have to do roll call. So Chairman Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Gursel.
Aye.
Commissioner Brunel.
Yes.
Commissioner Levine.
Aye.
And Commissioner Opie.
Yes.
So you can move on to public appearance.
Okay. Now we have, uh, next up, public appearances. Per California state law, matters raised by the public will be automatically referred to staff or placed on the next meeting's agenda. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time will be limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone from the public with anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, looks like we're set there. Next up is the public hearing for City of Sonora initiated project for a use permit to allow an emergency shelter to house up to fifteen individuals at one time within the existing after renovation residential structure. This location is for two ninety South Stewart Street in a commercial C-zone, assess a parcel number zero zero two dash one five one dash zero zero three.
Thank you. Yes, this is a city initiated project. Uh, the city has purchased the property located at two ninety South Stewart Street, and it, um, was purchased for the Stewart Street Shelter Project. Um, ATCA will be the, um, agency that would run the shelter, but the city would continue to retain ownership to the property uh, once the building is renovated. I have Joe here, the director of ATCA, and he is available for any questions as far as, um, running the shelter, managing the shelter, any questions that you might have related to that. Um, but I will tell you how about the project. Um, and I want to give you a little bit of a background. Um, back when the first last pit count was done, which is the point in time count that was done, and that was in the county, um, included the city of Sonora, there were two hundred and sixty-one homeless in that count, or it was people either, um, currently homeless or had the potential of becoming homeless. Um, so whether they were couch surfing or whatever, um, they were included in that count. Um, they're gonna be doing another pit count in, uh, the start of this next year, and everybody anticipates that that number will go up significantly. Um, and so, um, there is a concern on the number of homeless that reside or are within the city as well as the county as a whole. Um, there are requirements that have come about, um, and I have included the information in here. Um, it's, it stems from the court case of Martin versus the City of Boise, um, and that occurred in two thousand and eighteen, and there was a ruling made that, um, unless there's shelter space available, that, uh, people can't be moved off of public lands. Um, so, um, because of that, it is crucial that we look at making sure that we have adequate shelter space, both in the city and the county, um, to make sure that we can address the homeless issue as well as try to keep people out of our public spaces and provide services for them, and hopefully get them back on their feet, um, and back into society. Um, but it does, what this does do is it prohibits our enforcement of the no camping ordinance. So if they're on public lands, we can't enforce it versus, um, private lands, people have a right to not have them on their property. Um, so with that in mind, uh, the council also, uh, did come up, have their, in their policy that we needed to look at, affordable housing, homeless, the homeless issue in the city and shelter space as one of their goals, um, of the council. And so, uh, we knew that going into this last year, um, and so we started looking at opportunities to where we might be able to provide assistance and meet some of these needs. Um, this property was approved at one point for a commercial space in the old barber shop, which is the front part, and then two residences in the residential part of the building. Um, it was approved, uh, Jett Montgomery was the owner of the property, and that's who the city purchased it from, um, back in two thousand and fourteen. He started working through the process. He submitted some plans. Um, there were multiple corrections on the plans that were submitted, um, but he never did come back or never moved forward with the project. Um, and so it has sat there and has been vacant, other than migrants going in and out of it since that point of time. It is definitely a blighted building. Um, it definitely has been occupied by homeless individuals over those last several years. Even when we did our initial walkthrough to look at the condition of the interior of it, um, there, there was people, there were people in there as we walked through. So, so, uh, definitely was an issue in that neighborhood. After the city acquired it, the first thing that we did, it was overgrown by the China trees. They were growing up through the porch and other areas. So we had public works go in, and we cleaned everything out of there and opened up, visibly opened it up a little. And, and there was also a shed in the back of the building that connected it to all the commercial property along Washington Street, down where the Chinese restaurant is. Um, and we were very concerned of if a fire started in there, um, it would take down that whole commercial block. And that was our first thought when we did our initial walkthrough. So we had public works remove that shed. So we now have a safe distance between the building and the commercial properties to the front on Washington, or to the back on Washington Street. So, um, moving, we did, um, also hold a public forum, um, and just to, to really let everybody know what the city was planning, we wanted to be upfront. On October twelfth, we actually had a community conversation here, um, and we invited anybody that was interested to come to that meeting. I have included the handout and some in the back there that was provided at that meeting, so people had a clearer view of what the city's intentions were, why we were doing it, um, and moving forward what would be required of the city in order to get through this process. So I have included that for you guys. It does have pictures of the buildings. It has pictures before we did the cleanup as well. Um, we, um, we are not exempt from our own rules. Um, so we do need to go through a use permit process because under the commercial zoning, a use permit is required for an emergency shelter. Um, so we, um, are going through this process because that's what we want to put in that location. Um, and down the road too, if the city were to sell the shelter to an agency, another agency, um, and that might be years from now, um, long after I retire, um, they, um, that agency would need to know that they have a legal use. It's got a use permit on record, and they've gone through the proper channels in order to, to do the work. Um, the other requirement is it can't be within three hundred, uh, feet of any other emergency shelter, school, youth center, or daycare. So we did that analysis as well, and there is a, um, the minimum three hundred feet does exist between all of those uses. Um, based on that, with a use permit, the project would be compliant with our municipal code, um, upon approval of the use permit. It's also consistent with the general plan, which is with a, uh, site designation of historic mixed use. The, um, cost, the cost to the city to purchase the property, we purchased the property for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, it will take, um, from our initial estimates, it's gonna take hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring the building back from where it is today. Um, it is in really bad condition. Um, so we've gotta do a lot of foundation work and a lot of dry rot work and a lot of, just a lot of work on it to preserve as best we can what you see today. The idea is to retain, um, the building, um, as, as it stands. Uh, we don't intend to take down the old barber shop. We're gonna utilize that space as part of the project. Um, but the siding is gonna have to be replaced and some other things. The idea is to do in kind, um, so that it does retain the look that you see today. Uh, if there is, if we're not able to do that, and if there's a substantial change that needs to happen, we would come back to you for a design review consideration, um, that provides the public opportunity to comment on the building if we can't bring it back to what it is today. But the intent is, is to preserve it, not take it out, not just, not demolish it, um, but to preserve it, reconstruct it, and get it, um, in operation. Um, we use, just for the public's peace of mind, the money that we use for this is housing money. It's redevelopment housing money that's been paid back to the agency, that, um, some of our housing money that was paid back to the successor housing agency. Um, it can be used for this purpose. We also have program income from community development block grant loans that have been paid back. So the next step after this is we will be holding a public hearing in front of the city council, um, to authorize or to approve the use of our program income for this project to reconstruct, re-rehab. It's a little bit more than just a rehab on that building. Um, and, um, then, once that goes through that process, um, Housing and Community Development out of Sacramento, uh, we submit an application, and then, once we have an agreement with them in place, um, then we can move forward with the project. The city has the money. It just, we have to get their approval to use it for this purpose. Um, so we'll be going through that whole process. So, um, we, um, it definitely is a blighted building. It definitely was impacting the neighborhood. Um, the shelter, we have another shelter. I don't know if people are aware of it, but we have another shelter that's down on South Washington Street. A lot of people don't even know it's there. It's also ran by ATCA, um, and, um, it has been for many years. That was a joint project back in the day, also with the city. The city actually owned that building. Um, and ATCA ran the program, ran the homeless shelter, just like we're proposing here, and that went on for many, many, many years, and eventually ATCA did end up buying the building with a grant from the city. But they did, um, run the program there for many years, um, with the city owning the building. So, um, we are, um, we did do, just to let you know, we did do public notification, just like we did the last time. Every meeting we've had on this, we've, um, we did a three hundred foot notification, um, for all the property owners around the property. We did receive a response from the Tuolumne Heritage Committee, and I've included that in your packet. Um, and we, um, I didn't, it's in here, Kim, right? I didn't see it. Should be in here. Oh, it's back here. It's attached to the form. So it is attached to the presentation, sorry. Um, but it is, you'll see it's the last page, and it's the comments from the Tuolumne Heritage Committee about the project. Um, the SEQA, it's exempt, um, it would be exempt under SEQA under, um, existing facilities, repairs, and minor alterations. It is an existing structure. Um, we did have set findings for the project, and we, um, did include some conditions, um, in case down the road, somebody else were to actually take ownership of the building, we wanted to make sure that there was some consistency in that what was being approved today stayed what was allowed now in the future. So it, it is set at fifteen individuals, um, and that will be in perpetuity. The use permit will hold on, will stand on the property. It could never exceed fifteen, more than fifteen individuals. Um, and any substantial change, if we have, if we, we can't preserve as much as we can of the building, I mean, we, that is the hope, we would come back for design review. Um, and we are requiring twenty-four hour management of the shelter, um, and it can only be used for an emergency shelter, but it cannot be used for a homeless drop-in center. The reason being that we really don't want people hanging out there. Uh, like the other shelter, they, they don't hang out around the shelter during the day in, in a drop-in center. That's what happens, so that's why we would not want that. And then the other conditions are just our standard conditions that are included with any, any of our applications. So, um, with that, if there's any questions that you guys have, again, Joe is here. He can talk to you regarding, um, how they operate shelters. They, they operate them in Amador County. They operate shelters here in Tuolumne County. And they can answer any questions to that. Um, one thing we don't want to forget is we need to open and close the public hearing. So when we're through with staff, and if you have any questions for Joe, then at that point, I would open the public hearing, um, and we'll get that on record and then close it.
You might have to catch me, though. Sure, any, uh, questions for staff? Jim?
Earlier, when I heard about this project, it came up about the liability of, of ownership. And it seemed to me that a solution to that liability is to lease the building to ATCA as opposed to just letting them use it or have an operating, have a management agreement, okay? If they lease the building, then they're responsible for it, and I don't want the city to get sued.
Right, well, we, our, our, our attorney.
The other thing I would like is, I'd like to get a copy of the, the, uh, we don't have a copy presentation.
It's in the staff report. Did you get your packet?
No.
Did you pick up your packet?
Didn't ever get a notice.
Oh, so we can make you a copy of the...
He doesn't have one either.
No, 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 I, I'm just, uh, careful.
Oh, yeah.
I just got mine in my car.
That's okay.
And I have to throw up a customer's card here, so.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so as far as the legal part of it, and we can make you a copy. Um, you want us to take like a two-minute break and go make copies, sir?
Uh, sure, yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
I'm, I'm fine. I just, I just would like to look at the pretty pictures.
Yeah, so as far, uh, no, only this part of it. So let me, I can give you this.
If you never, if you, just let us know at the beginning, we'll be...
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The other thing I don't understand is how it will operate, and maybe it'll be explained later, but, I guess you say you don't want basically transients to come in and hang out there.
Yeah.
It's not like a homeless hotel, a commercial homeless hotel. It's more like, these people are gonna be there, they're gonna stay there for quite a while, or stay there for a week or two weeks, or what's the limit on how it operates?
So Joe can go into that with you. They aren't limited to so many days, so, and yet, and once you get through with any questions, me then, it would probably be great for Joe to come up and kinda talk about how shelters operate and how they manage them, um, and all of that. But as far as the liability, the attorneys, the city attorney will work. The agreement between us and ATCA will be all worked out between all the attorneys.
Yeah, I just didn't want the city to get sued.
I have a question for staff. Um, I was just wondering what the parking situation is, if there's designated, if there's a certain amount of designated parking for the shelter, or if they use city street parking, or...
So we have, um, and Joe can also talk a little bit about that. I know Denise or did at the last meeting also. They have a parking area where they can have people park, uh, in, kind of in that jungle area, and they can work with them to leave their cars there, anybody that has one. Um, there are a couple spaces out front, and there will be a space in the back where employees can park.
I got a question for you, Rochelle. Um, I guess, is, are they gonna be using like the old Indian restaurant? Like where the, um, it's all gravel now, next to the breakfast place, between the gas station and the breakfast place? Is that part of it, or is it behind? Um, I forget what it is now, behind Hong Kong, that parking lot?
Right, so the parking lot next behind Hong Kong has been purchased by Hong Kong.
Okay.
So they, that's why they, it's all fenced now, 'cause he bought it. Um, but, um, there's a, it, right behind the building, there's a gap between there and the commercial buildings, and then there's enough room for one or two cars back there.
Perfect, okay.
Where the shed was that we took down.
I guess my, my biggest concern is the actual renovation itself. This is something that I'll go out to bid, correct, for, for the renovation? Something the city's gonna try and do.
I'm sorry, if we're gonna do one.
The, the actual renovation itself, uh, and the condition of the building, uh, you know, I can't even remember the last time it was occupied, but, uh...
Barber shop was there. I went there.
Was that in the nineties? It was the nineties, yeah. But, uh, yeah, the, the actual renovation of it, how much inspection has been done through the city? I know you gave us a quick estimate.
So we had, um, so the next step, once the funding, once we get through this and the funding is allocated, we'll hire an architect. We'll go out for an RFP, request for proposal, 'cause that'll be required, especially under the funding. Um, and then we'll select an architect, and that architect will come in, and they will actually do, put a plan together for the building. Um, we assume there's lead base paint. Uh, we assume there's probably some asbestos. But what we, they recommended when we, we had the initial architect walkthrough and just do kind of a quick down and dirty kind of oversight of what they thought it would cost to renovate it. Um, they, um, said, instead of wasting money doing that now, um, a lot of the inside, a lot of it's gonna have to come down, so, um, it's best to wait and do it all as one project.
Okay, yeah.
And it actually is a pretty cool house inside. It, it's very interesting the way it's laid out, and the basement would make a great haunted house. But, um, but it's, um, yeah, I mean, but it just, it needs a ton of work. If it wasn't us purchasing it, they would, somebody would have torn it down because we're gonna spend more money renovating it than you would, it would cost to build a new one.
Why, why renovate, why renovate this then, if it would be less expensive to build a new one?
'Cause our funding source would not allow us to tear it down and rebuild it.
Oh.
And also, we'd like to try to save the building.
And are all of the, so there's, it, it looks like there's, there's been multiple additions over the decades or years? Is that, are all of those gonna be tried to be saved, or some things gonna come down?
So the only addition that's the new part of, is that little part out front where the barber shop was. We are gonna utilize that, um, that we're looking at probably having that as the office for the manager area. Um, so, but they, um, we will keep that. The rest of it, my understanding is the building, and Sharon's here, so she'll, she'll correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding that this house was over where the fountain lot is today, and they moved it to the current location. And the only addition, there's been things done within the building, like under the basement at one point, there were multiple units, 'cause there's doors down there with numbers on it, but the ceiling is really short. Um, so it's kind of like a hobbit area. And they, um, but obviously, they had, uh, little apartments underneath there at one point. Um, and, but it's all within the footprint of the building. It wasn't, and they've broken up the building. In fact, we found an extra apartment that we didn't know was there, as we were figuring out that something was missing, and we found another door upstairs to another apartment. Um, but yeah, so it's kind of funky the way it's been done, but it definitely, um, the only addition I'm aware of is the barber shop area.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any other questions of staff?
Well, I just had one comment. I was on the County Commission on Aging conference call today. And the problem with the point in time, the way the government, federal government has us do these, is they're done in the winter. The homeless population almost doubles in the summer here. So maybe Tuolumne County will also do one in the summer. But I just want to point out that, you know, it's two hundred and sixty, three hundred now, and it'll be six hundred in the summer. We need a lot more shelters.
Well, for our preference, I'm glad they're doing it in the winter, 'cause we can only do so many shelters in the city. We just don't have the capacity.
I understand, yeah, but the county also, yeah, has.
Yeah, the county also is, has responsibility as well.
But the summers, you know, the warm weather attracts homeless.
Yeah, I, and I know Joe's intimately involved with the point in time com, uh, count as well, so he might be able to answer that question.
Peter, any other questions for the staff? No. It will move on to...
Do you want to have Joe come up from there?
Yeah, let's have Joe, the operator for ATCA. Any questions? Uh, I know Jim had a couple questions for the operation of it. Uh, I know myself, uh, I'll say I'm fairly unfamiliar with your organization. I just hear good things about it. And, uh, yeah, uh, any, we'll start with commissioner questions for, for, uh, our operator.
Well, how, how do you intend to run it? Is it just gonna be like, uh, a week, weeks that they can stay? Or how do you find them? How do you decide, if you've got twenty-five people, how do you decide which ones get in?
Yeah, so all of our shelters are operated the same way. Um, there's a process by which, um, people apply for housing support, and all of them get entered into a database. They go through, um, a process, um, that, um, depending on the program, they're given a certain number of points, um, on how they answer questions. Some programs, uh, offer more points if you're younger in age or older in age. Some programs offer more points if you've got mental health-related issues. So depending on the program funding, um, people go through a, a process, an application process, and are entered into a database, um, that is a part of the coordinated entry system. So based on the number of points that each person gets, they move to the top of the priority list to be provided an opportunity to enter into the shelter. Now, once they're in the shelter, um, different circumstances, um, afford certain entrance longer time to stay in the shelter. Um, for instance, you, you could be in the shelter for one day, create a complete disturbance, um, and you're gone, okay? Um, to families, um, and I'll just cite a particular story. Um, a husband and wife came in with two kids. They had lost their jobs, um, were doing their best to survive in a car, um, entered through the, um, coordinated entry system. Um, we set them up in a, a room in, in our shelter here on Washington Street. It took some number, and we go through programs with, with families, with individuals. Um, we're, uh, teamed up with a lot of different services, from public health, Health and Human Services, mother of job training and, and others, um, where, uh, we provide them an opportunity to, um, write resumes. Uh, we give them job opportunities through mother of job training, um, where they can apply for positions. Uh, it turned out in this particular case, one of them got a job, um, working at Lowe's, um, regular day shift, um, that allowed the other parent, uh, to stay in the shelter and care for the kid. Um, and then she got a job, um, working a night shift, where the husband comes back, you know, in the evening, um, he can take care of the kids, and they're switching off duties. Well, they were allowed to stay in the shelter for much longer than normal. Uh, on average, it's generally about a thirty to forty-five day stay, until generally they find, um, a job. We also, um... We also provide, we work with a lot of landlords. And we have a lot of agreements where we can get people out of the shelter and into an apartment or into a house where they're renting a room. And when we get them to that point and they've got a job, because many of them have social security, but you know, if they can get a job, then great. But we, we move them through the process to get them stable housing and from a position of housing insecurity to self-sufficiency, and that's our goal.
I commend you on that, it's very, sounds very good.
Yeah, thank you. In that particular case, that husband and wife were both working, saving money. We moved them into a transitional home that we have, a three bedroom transitional home in Columbia. And then, so they're paying rent at there and were paying rent there. They saved up enough money to buy a, a mobile home. And so they are now in their own home, with their family, and we've, we've done our job, right? Success story. So, so it really depends. The answer to your question, how long they sit, stay really depends on the circumstances and whether or not they're following the rules. Every single person in there has a job. Whether they're dusting, vacuuming, cooking meals, they have to trade off on that. They do not loiter during the day. The only people that you'll find who spend the night there during the day are those that work nights. And, you know, are either asleep or, you know, they're just getting ready for their, for their night shift. So everybody else is, is out looking for jobs, in training, getting services, those, those kinds of things.
What I envisioned was 25 people and they're all good applicants. Then how do you decide which one gets in?
Well, it's, it's like I said, it's all that coordinated entry process and it's, it's a point system. It's whoever flows to the top and, and is interested in, in staying there and following the rules.
Thank you.
I guess I got a question, just about the, how do I say this? The financial part of it. Is this something that the city is funding even after the renovations or, I mean, do you guys have, I mean, I'm sure you have your own funding source. You know, I just don't know how the funding portion of it actually works, because it is not cheap to house people.
It's not. And, and in fact, a, a shelter like that cost us about $150,000 a year to maintain. That includes the staff that will reside there during the day and the food services that we provide. So we also run the food bank out of Jamestown that pushes about a million pounds of food out around the county every year to 14 different partner pantries, including Interfaith and, and others. So we provide food from our food bank and it cents on the dollar, right? But part of that $150,000 a year that it costs to run a shelter like that, it'll all be out of our funding. It's not city funding. It's sometimes county funding, generally CDBG has been what's supported our other shelter and our food bank. That's at the county level, CDBG money. Community development block grant, I guess you're wondering what that is. Or other programs that we have. It depends on those programs. If it comes from HCD or comes from HUD or comes from somebody else, they all have their different requirements. And whatever we need to do to, to use those funds, so.
Sounds good.
It was mentioned by Rochelle that the South Washington location had been operated by ATCA with the city ownership. About how long did that last?
You know, that's a really good question. I don't know, but it, it is well over 15 years. I mean, I, I'm gonna say it could, so ATCA, by the way, ATCA, Amador, Tuolumne Community Action Agency. So ATCA was formed in 1981 as a result of Lyndon Baines Johnson's War on Poverty in 1964. So that's what, that was what formed community action agencies. It took us until 1981, this county, to team up with Amador County with both boards of supervisors forming what's called a joint powers of authority to form this community action agency. So I, my bosses, two of them are boards of supervisors at the county level. And two of them are boards of supervisors in Amador County. So Amador Tuolumne Community Action Agency, I believe the shelter dates back to the, it could be early 90s. It, it's been a long time. I can try and get that definitive answer for you, but it's been a long time.
Yeah, just a general, yeah.
So I've been with the city 25 years. I just started my, the start of my 26th year with the city. It was there, the city and the ATCA were partners when I started with the city.
Is it, is it still in the city, is it still owned by the city or is it nobody acting now?
They got a grant and bought it maybe 10 years ago, maybe somewhere around there.
Right.
So would that be the goal with this one, to get them to buy it?
You know, I'm gonna retire, Jim, so in that-
And so will I.
The next people can decide on how they want to run it, but we will set it up where the city holds ownership for now.
Yep. Okay, any other questions for, for the operator?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Next we'll open public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the commission? We'll have three minutes, correct?
Correct. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Sharon Maravich, I'm representing the Tuolumne Heritage Committee. We encourage you to follow your staff's recommendations to approve the use permit for 290 South Stewart Street. This building is about 120 years old and eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, according to the city's historical report completed in 2016. Several hundred houses and commercial buildings are in this report and assessed as to their significance. Oftentimes, buildings do not have proper maintenance over the years and they are characterized as blighted or eyesores. You as planning commissioners have copies of the city's general plan, which contains a, a chapter on historic preservation. Repair rather than replace is an important goal of this chapter. The Tuolumne Heritage Committee would ask that the city's architect on this project, as well as the city's building inspector, be mindful of the significance of this building and keep in place as much of the building's original materials as possible. They should be familiar with the state historical building code, which, and it's, and use its provisions to the fullest extent possible. The code is designed to protect the integrity of historic buildings without compromising issues related to public safety, utilities, and interior features like trim, placement of windows, doors, and so on. It appears from your staff report that the city will be using federal funds to complete the project. If that's the case, there needs to be a review under the section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. This is to ensure that federal money is not used to harm our nation's architectural and cultural heritage. In conclusion, you have the opportunity to bring back to life this historic building, which in turn will provide shelter for the neediest among us. And I, that's my presentation. Is there gonna be design review on this, Rochelle?
We will if we have to do any substantial changes. The idea, Sharon, really is to try to bring it back to life.
Yes.
We're gonna do, we're gonna do our best.
Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else from the public wish to address the commission? Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any further comments?
I do have one more question. So what we would be passing today is just the use permit, correct? Has it anything to do with architecture or anything like that?
No.
Just be able to use the space to house 15 people-
Right.
As a shelter.
If we get into the architectural side of it and there's some major thing that has to be changed to the building, we certainly would, it would come back with design. The idea, like I said, is to keep it as true to what you see today as we can.
Would there be any benefit to rezoning it residential?
No, it would not, because in, especially R1, because you can't even have a shelter in a resident, in a R1 or an R2.
Well, it's sort of a mixed use. You said it was in a commercial zone, I didn't know.
It's in a commercial zone, right. There, and the only zoning that really touches it is CO. And you'd still need a use permit, so we're, we're better to go in.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying to not, we're trying to be open and transparent through this whole process and trying to manipulate it so that people don't know what we're doing.
I just got one question. With the, are they gonna be using it before any work is done or they are using it after all the work is done?
I can guarantee they will not be in the building until the work is done.
That's probably a good thing.
Cause I think they would fall through the floor, so that would be a no.
Anything else, motions?
I move to approve.
Move to second. Okay, we have Commissioner Jim Grinnell and Stephen Opie. Do we want to read off the conditions?
Or actually, if you guys want to just accept them as approved as per the findings and conditions, that's fine. Jim, if you're good with that?
That's fine, sure.
Okay. But you don't have a copy of them, so let me read them off too.
Well, I read them, I read them at home, you know, on the thing, but I thought you'd have paper copies for us.
Yeah, no, you gotta bring them. We are, we are trying to preserve trees here. So the findings are, the use is not located within 300 feet of another emergency shelter, school, youth center, or daycare. The use is desirable in that, at that specific location. Features found on the original building will be preserved. The use is consistent with the city's Sonora general plan. The use is consistent with the intent of Title 17 of the Sonora Municipal Code with the purp-, with the purposes of the zone in which it is located. The condition, recommended conditions of approval that you've included is that basically number one is the use permit is for what you guys are approving tonight. It becomes effective after 10 days. If the city doesn't move forward in a year, it goes away. That won't be a problem. The emergency shelter shall not house more than 15 individuals at one time. Any substantial change to the exterior of the building will require a design review permit, which would come back to this body. On-site 24-hour management of the shelter is required. The facility shall be used, sorry, there's a S there, as an emergency shelter only and shall not be used as a homeless drop-in center. And then there, the city has to indemnify ourselves in this case, because we are the applicant and we have to obtain all the required permits.
So the one item that you have, you said it has to go back to the original building? But the original building was elsewhere, okay? And then barber shop was added extra, so do you want to modify that?
No, any substantial change to the exterior would come back for a design review.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, the way you've written that is that it has to revert to the original building. And the original building is less than what's there now.
No, I don't-
See what I'm saying?
I don't see that, am I missing something, guys?
You're thinking more as, as is, original?
Right, because the original building was elsewhere and the original building didn't have the barber shop in the front.
I think I understand what you're saying, but I, I think that they just kind of, I think it's kind of covered, you know, like how it, how it was. It's been, the barber shop's been there for a long time, I think is part of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, what, the intent is what you see today is what we're trying to preserve.
There we go, there we go. I'll take it. We have Commissioner Grinnell and moving to approve.
Yes.
And second, can we roll call Luke?
Sure, Chairman Anderson.
Uh, yes.
Vice Chairman Giorso?
Yes.
Commissioner Grinnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Yes.
And Commissioner Opie?
Yes.
Sorry, I wasn't sure where you said original until you were talking about the findings, sorry about that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was five, over.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next we have design review. Application from Sonora Lumber for a design review permit for the installation of new metal lumber storage racking in a commercial C zone located at 644 South Washington Street. Assessors parcel number 056-650-019.
So to let you know, the applicants are here tonight, so they can answer any questions that you might have in particular to the racking, because I can guarantee that I cannot. But I do, we, this is subject to design review. And they weren't aware of it when they started putting them in, until they became aware of it. So no harm, no foul, they're just going through the process now. It's just a little after the fact and they do want to put some additional racking in. So they stopped and they're getting caught up with us and then they'll move forward. So I just want to make that clear. They've been more than easy to work with on this. So the racking, because it's a structure and because it's subject to a permit, it does trigger design review in the commercial zone, so that is why it's before you tonight. That, the map that we've included shows the racking areas where they will, where they're proposing, where the racking either exists or there would be additional racking that is put in. It is, outdoor sales and storage is not normally allowed in the commercial zone without a use permit. It takes a special use permit. But this building has been a lumber since probably before I was born, which is a long time, just to let you know that. And so we would look at that as, the retail section, of course, is a useful, by right, we'd look at this as a legal non-conforming. So we do find that is consistent with the zoning. And we also, it is also in the designation for land use designation as commercial and we also find it consistent with that. The racking has been installed behind the buildings. There is no, none of the blue racking in front of the buildings. We did include a condition because should, we would recommend that it continue to be, be placed behind the buildings and not have any of the blue racking out in front of the buildings. So we did include that as a condition of the project. And that is what they're proposing anyway, but we, for, just for the more long-term. We did solicit advisory agency notification. We did get several comments back from the fire department and we, also from the building department. And they have some permits that they'll have to get and they're working with that department or that area. But fire did have some concerns. We've included that as conditions for the project and I'll go over that when we cover the conditions. It is exempt from CEQA. And we are, we are recommending approval. We have included four findings. And I'll read them so that Jim has those as well as Stephen. We have four findings that we would like, we are proposing. The use is consistent with the city's Sonora general plan. The use is consistent with Title 17 of the Sonora Municipal Code and with the purposes of the zone in which it is located. The proposed structures are consistent with the existing normal business operations. The proposed structures are to be located at the rear of the property and behind existing buildings, thereby reducing their visual impact to the surrounding property and are consistent with the applicable design standards of the general plan and Sonora Municipal Code. The conditions that we have for you tonight is number one. And that, the first one is that it's in accordance with what you're approving tonight. And I can approve minor, minor changes at the staff level. All new metal racking is to be placed behind the existing buildings. The fire access road must be maintained to drive around the entire lumberyard. It must be a minimum of 20 feet wide with a minimum 13.6 foot overhead clearance. Lumber rack exterior storage shall be arranged to form stable piles with a maximum height of 20 feet. Pile shall not exceed 150,000 cubic feet in volume. Condition number five, permanent storage area shall be surrounded with an approved fence. And six is an approved hydrant and hose system or portable fire extinguishing equipment suitable for the fire hazard involved shall be provided- suitable for the fire hazard involved shall be provided for open storage yards, including minimum extinguisher size of 4A-40B, maximum distance of travel to the extinguishers 30 feet. Existing hose system must be tested, approved, and brought into compliance for use. No smoking signs shall be posted to state. No smoking within 25 feet of the storage areas. All storage racking must be a minimum of 10 feet from all combustibles. And then their indemnity of the city and that they have to comply with all local, state, and federal regulations and permits. So all but, the majority of those are related to fire and related to the fire code, so they'll be working with the fire chief on compliance with that. Again, we are recommending approval if you guys have any questions.
Questions for staff?
No, I think it's excellent.
The applicant is here if anybody, if they'd like to say anything or...
Okay, the applicant, would you like to approach and say anything about the project or take questions?
A mic pull away. Good evening. I'm gonna only say the simple thing, thank you for your service and the time, but I, I'm perfectly comfortable with everything the city is doing. Unfortunately, like I said, I've been doing this for 45 years and I did not realize that we had to be where we are now, but we're trying to pick up the pace. You know, the other thing I want to indicate to you guys is this racking system from stacking building materials is much more safe and that's a real critical piece for me. So it's not only efficiency that we're looking at, but it is much safer system than free stacking lumber piles, so other than that, I'm, I'm wonderful. You got any questions to me?
Questions?
Looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And now we'll open the public hearing.
Just, now it's just open to the public. There's no hearing on a design review. But the public has a pro, opportunity to speak if they'd like to.
And if there's anyone that would like to make public comment, now will be the time and it'll be three minutes. Doesn't look like anyone.
Nobody's running to the mic.
We'll close that and bring it back to the commission. And anything to add or?
I'd like to move to approve. I think this is great.
I'll second it.
Okay, again, we'll have Commissioner Grinnell move to approve and second by Commissioner Opey. We'll do the roll call vote.
Okay. Chairman Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Gorsa.
Aye.
Commissioner Grinnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Levine.
Yes.
And Commissioner Opey.
Aye.
I vote.
Approved. Thank you.
No, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Everybody leaves after their turn.
It's like, we're out of here.
So is that the new veterans 10% discount?
Thank you, bye.
We got a really busy audience tonight.
That's a good thing sometimes, right?
Very nice tonight, thank you, girls.
Thank you. We, it didn't get put in here, but I do, just wanted to let you know real quick under discussion that we are looking at bringing our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I was hoping to have it ready for January. We have a new planning consulting firm that we're working with. Hopefully they will have it in time, so I can bring it to you guys in February. We might bring it as a discussion item only depending on how significant the changes are. What I am looking at is I want city to be a, considered a pro housing city. We need housing, but we have to look at parking and some other things too. So we'll be looking at maybe ways to incentivize the accessory dwelling units to where if they do provide offsite parking, some of the stuff that we're, that we have to do, they might rise above that and then get the parking off our streets, because parking is the biggest issue that we see with ADUs, because you guys all live here and you know what our streets look like and sometimes there's no way to add more off-street parking and if they don't have to provide it. So, so we'll be working with that. There's also the new law, I know you guys have heard about, the no longer any single family, how, zoning in the state of California. We're not exactly sure how that's going to impact us. They're working on that as well, so we'll be, that'll all come down as one analysis, so they're working on it and then they'll sit down with staff and then we'll be bringing it to you guys and we'll discuss what does that mean and how does it affect accessory dwelling units? Does that mean that you can have two houses, one accessory dwelling unit and two junior ADUs on one single family lot, which would create five par, five units on a parcel?
So does that mean like R1? Is R1 single family?
R1 is single family, yeah.
But, but now you take that R1 and you split that and then you can build a second unit in the back and each of those can have two ADUs.
We don't know that for sure.
That's what I read in the, it came out in January.
Sounds like it's gonna be busy.
And is it 500 square feet or less?
Yeah, that's the analysis they're doing right now. So then it'll come back to you guys with what that means, because everybody's scrambling right now to figure out how that's going to impact and what we have to approve and what we don't have to approve, so.
I remember getting those copies of, out of Sacramento.
Right.
You know, the, the two laws, one last spring and one in January.
Yeah, there was a whole bunch of them, yes.
And there's one just recently that said you don't need any parking requirements.
Yeah, that's, that's the biggest issue.
I guess that's my next question too with parking. I know you probably don't know off, offhand, but I know the biggest problem with parking in town is you, they don't want to build any high structures because there's a lot of mining activity underground and they're worried about compaction. Is that something that, this, I mean, is it something the city's kind of looking at, maybe doing, maybe, I don't know?
Yeah, we kind of leave it up to the applicant. You can go to 35 feet, right? But they're high, so they can go two stories. Anything above that would have to come back to you guys for a use permit if they want to go more than two stories. But yeah, they have to do engineered plans. They're gonna, they, they'd have to look at what's underneath there. There's no way that a city, you could approve it without it because the liability would be huge.
And on top of that, is like the parking next to the Brennan's, little red house right there, is that city parking or is that like?
Where the farmer's market is? Yeah, that's our city parking lot.
I think there's like that bowling alley and next to the bank there, I can't remember what that one.
Right, we have several little parking lots around over by the firehouse and stuff, so yeah. But it's just, as we know, parking's going to be the biggest issue. And then the other issue is water and TUDs dealing with that. Because there is an impact to them as well as to what they can charge and not charge for services, so they're doing that analysis now on how that's going to impact their system. So yeah, so that's all going on. So when we come back, we'll have a very strong interpretation of what is allowed and what's not allowed and then a draft ordinance to take a look at.
And what happens is, say you've got a lot, what I'm thinking about is on that same block that you're, for the city, but where the little post office is there, there's a open piece of land right there that's got a sale sign on it now. Could you build, let's say like a motel, but they're all ADUs like over in Columbia, there's a lot of little small buildings and that makes a motel?
So...
Oh, you mean up there on Parrot's Ferry, right on Parrot's Ferry? Just, just before you get to town like?
Yeah, yeah.
The pizza parlor and all the...
All those little, little apartments, little motel units? I just wondered if you could do that on a piece of property like this and maybe make them two-story, okay? So that you've got, you know, 20, 15 or 20 units in a little piece of land?
Yeah.
With no walk, no walking requirement, because that provides affordable housing.
Yeah, you'd have, we'd have to look at it. I couldn't answer on the fly, Jim, how big the parcel is, access and all of that and what they're proposing.
But you're trying to, you're trying to provide housing for a lot of people that don't have any cars, so if they could walk to downtown.
Right.
Or catch the bus.
Yeah. I'm trying to say if they, you or don't have cars.
Or how many cars?
Yeah, because I, I try to buy, I see a lot of cars out there. Usually they're on the side though.
Thank you.
Full of stuff. And then the other thing that we're gonna have you bringing forward to you is the new sign ordinance. We have them also working on that. We're gonna start with you guys. It's not part of our zoning, but in talking with the consultant, him and I are on the same page on that signing, signage used to be basically approved by the planning commission and then pretty much took it to a staff level, but there's still some advisory things that go on with our signs and we're gonna try to make it even simpler. We want to make it, we want to be very pro-business. They're not gonna like everything that goes in there. There's certain things that we're still gonna be recommending that the city doesn't allow, but we want to make the process smoother, quicker. We are gonna be recommending no advisory review of any signs. There, there's certain requirements. You meet those requirements, your signs are issued and there's no way for people to comment back on your signs. Right now, when the applications come in under the code, we have, if you're in the downtown, the, who is it, Heritage Committee? And the Historical Society, right? They all advise on it. Really the only ones that ever comment are the historical groups. We want to make it, we want to streamline the process to where this is what, this is how much you can have and as long as you stay within that, permits are go through and you don't have to wait and have to go back and forth.
I know it is. With the historical people too, it's, it's really hard to, some of the building materials that they had back then is, you can't get.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So sometimes you just gotta change it, but then other day kind of put a big log, something to stop you from going further sometimes.
I mean, some of the, I mean, I'm sure they painted signs on canvas too back then, I mean, and, you know, stapled them to the side of the wall. I mean, so somewhere there has to be some give and take. We're a living, we are a living city.
Yeah.
You know, Sonora is a busy living city, you know, so, so, and we can't, we can't regulate content. We're not allowed by law to regulate content. So, so we just need to, and it's a pain for staff just as much as a pain for everybody else. It's very, it's a very tough process, so we want to make it easier for everybody, the businesses and for running it and going through the process, so, and for the staff.
I vote aye for that one.
Yeah, so anyway, so, so we'll be bringing that forward. Again, it might be a discussion item to start with you guys, but we will be bringing forward and that one will be more of a recommendation to the council, but I do want to make sure that you guys have a chance to see it and comment on it, because there, there is parts of that ordinance that does affect the planning commission. If they want an exception, it has to come to you guys. So, and if there's an appeal, it comes back to you guys. So I just want to make sure that we, we get you guys, your guys' input and not skip you and go straight to the council, okay? So those are gonna, a couple biggies that are gonna be coming down and they'll probably be in February and I wouldn't, we're, we're really not gonna have a January meeting, I can tell you that, but Kim will send out the cancellations at the end of the month. Okay?
All right.
You just reminded, just reminded me about February.
We'll put a little alarm on your phone.
Yes, yes, it works good, by the way.
I have a question, Rochelle. Since the city council extended Zoom for their meetings, is there a plan to include us in that?
That's what I was talking about at the very, before we started the meeting. So you're, at the beginning of every meeting, you're gonna have an option to do a hybrid, to stay in person, or to, to strictly go to Zoom. So you guys will comment back to staff. The only exception to that will be is if we don't have staff, they, there's paid staff that comes to the city council meeting, the city clerk, the deputy clerk. I don't have a deputy clerk. Out of the goodness of Kim's heart, she stays late on, on Monday so that she can help us out. If there's a day that she can't, there's no way I can run Zoom and talk to you guys and do everything at the same time. So yeah, but we, we can visit that. Like we talked about, the masks are all coming back. I guess numbers are going up, so stay tuned, you know? This happened last year after Thanksgiving too, so we shall see what happens, but we'll keep you guys in the loop and let you know what we know.
Okay, thank you. When do we vote on this for, for going to, staying in person, going to Zoom or the hybrid?
At the beginning of every meeting, I will, there's gonna be a little thing that's be permanently on our agenda till this is all over and we will ask you, what are your, what do you guys, you want to stay in person? And then you guys can let us know what you want to do.
Okay.
So on the Commission on Aging today, it was brought up, you have to get like a 30-day advance filing approval to continue in, in, let's say, online as opposed to in person? That renews every 30 days, but you have to, have to vote on it every 30 days.
Yeah, that's, I heard the same thing, but it was about a different committee.
Right.
Right, right.
So the city, so the city council already made the decision and that was at the meeting, their last meeting. That meeting, their last meeting, we, your notice, your, the notices had already gone out, the public hearing for this meeting, so it had to be in person, because that's what was on the hearing notice. So you won't make a decision again now until February.
Right, but what I'm saying, that you can't hold a meeting unless you've had this notice in advance.
I see, he, he's saying...
You have, you have to, let's say you prove it today, it's only good for 30 days.
Right.
Then you have to approve it again for the next 30 days.
But you guys don't always meet every 30 days. So the process for this group is going to be at the beginning of the next meeting, you guys will say what you want for the next meeting after that and what you'll want for the next meeting after that. But the problem is sometimes it's gonna be 60 days out and sometime, the state might change the rules before we even get to that point.
Yeah, but right now their rule is 30 days, not 31 days.
The council, the council adopted it by resolution, so really they, they make, made the policy for all the committees and so they, they can, they're allowing the committees to make that decision, but it, they do, they'll do a resolution every 30 days and they're the big body over the city. This is the best we can do because you guys won't meet again for 60 days, so you're not gonna meet next, in 30 days just to make a decision what you want to do in the next 30 days.
From what you say, then the county would have been able to do it for the Commission on Aging, but the county didn't, wasn't able to do it for the Commission on Aging, the Commission had to do it for themselves.
Right.
So what you're just saying...
They included it in their resolution, all commissions committees, so don't worry, it's fine.
Hey, 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 and I could say, I could say this, just paying attention in the last year, the county is way busier than the city. Crazy, they have like three, four meetings a month and, and they're eight hours long.
Yeah.
Don't get involved in that.
Well, thank you so much.
Wait till, wait till we go back to Zoom.
Oh, gosh.
Okay.
All set?
We're done.
We'll move to adjourn.
Black it, yeah.